Because now on.
Really? Power. Uh, that's the first time I've ever done that in my life. Um, we're calling to order and the first thing that we're going to do in this marvelous meeting is say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, now we've done the Pledge of Allegiance. Approval of the October sixth board agenda, which I haven't read. And other people were requesting marvelous things beyond this thing, so.
This is, uh, this, they gave me a, they gave me a dead mic.
A dead.
Yeah, that's probably appropriate.
Mine works.
Rick had asked about that, so when we have future agenda items suggested at a board meeting, those will go on a regular agenda through the agenda setting process. Work sessions are kind of like scheduled out, so work sessions are very specific, one, maybe two topics. And so this one was already, uh, ready to go, and so the, the things that Rick asked for will be addressed, uh, at our October fifteenth meeting. Cause it'll be a regular board meeting.
Well, I need an approval, apparently, of the October sixth, twenty twenty-five board agenda.
I move to approve the October sixth, twenty, um, twenty-five, uh, work session board agenda.
Do we have a, do we have a dis, do we have a second? I need a second. Just say something.
Let's say something. Well, I would wait for the discussion.
That comes afterwards.
Okay.
I just had a second, so I had a second, and now we can discuss.
Okay.
You all say aye?
Well, no, we didn't, we don't aye yet.
And, uh, so now we're in the discussion, so discuss away, my friend.
Okay, so might I ask that we take, uh, four A and put it down and put four B first? And the reason I'm asking that is the training session is a video session that's an hour and a half. In my opinion, uh, four B is much, much more important to talk about than listening to the Oregon School Board Association's presentation. So all I'm asking is we do the, first we do the discussion about books and then have the training.
Four A is a required training.
That's true, but the required training can occur after we have our discussion about books.
It's really not on the thing. It's for a public meeting do's and don'ts virtual training, isn't that? Well, isn't that in the, the, um, part of our education video?
It is, he's, that's what he's saying, and he's asking to flip four A and four B. I got short attention span, but I mean, aren't we gonna be here for both anyway?
I, 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 I would just say a lot, we have to do this thing, we all, if we don't, we're in trouble, I don't know how, well, how they punish us.
I've already seen it.
Well, bring it, uh, bring it, we have it, and it's too exciting.
Trust me, it's, it's a sleeper.
Uh, it's, uh, you guys can, um, I, I, there's a motion on the table, any more discussion? Okay, who wants to flip the agenda as re, as requested by our friend? Well, no, we'll just do my motion, vote the motion first. Uh, the first motion is, is the, the agenda is approved and, uh, and let's hear it, let's have a vote. All's in favor, aye.
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 Okay, so we're gonna get bored stiff with this, and next time you do this, you're gonna have the district spend money on coffee and caffeine pills. Okay?
I can make a cup of coffee for anybody that wants it, just tell them.
Okay, cause this is painful, guys.
I, you should've told me, I would've just brought dinner, I, I just pulled two quiches out of the oven.
Well, next time we'll talk. Okay, well, we'll fire this thing up, uh, mister, mister supervisor, assistant, miss, somebody. I'm gonna get some coffee.
I didn't have any coffee today.
Yeah, I'll, uh.
What are you getting? Coffee?
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I skipped lunch. I, I, I have watched it last year on the internet, and I also did a hell of a lot of legal work while I watched it. Yeah, it's, uh.
Legal officer and interim deputy executive director with OSBA. I will be one of your presenters tonight, along with Spencer Lewis, who is our Director of Policy Services, and Therese Holmstrom, who's one of our senior assistant legal counsels.
I almost returned the best thing I've ever bought. My experience with the Inns translator, honestly, it was almost a return. Let me explain why. I almost made the dumbest decision before even giving it a chance. I bought this little hand.
We have a very full agenda tonight. Um, I will be talking about the mandatory training requirement and the law surrounding that. Um, some definitions that are in statute and, and rules now that apply to public meeting law. And then I'll talk about when public meeting laws apply and when they do not apply. And then Therese will cover public meeting requirements and prohibitions, and then Spencer will talk about executive sessions and a relatively new complaint process that we have related to public meeting law violations. So starting with the mandatory training requirement that is now in place, um, this is a law that requires, uh, governing bodies with total expenditures of one million dollars or more to have mandatory public meeting training once during each term of office. Um, this is, you're required to maintain a record of that training, and if requested, you are required to truthfully certify completion of that training. So there's no requirement that you submit, um, evidence of this training to O G E C. Uh, just as a general course, it's only if you're asked about that that you have to, um, make sure that you have a record that you can give to O G E C if they request it. Uh, even though this is only required of governing bodies with expenditures of one million dollars or more, it is recommended for all governing bodies, um, to do this training once per term. And this term governing body is underlined because that is a term that's defined in the law, and we will talk about that here momentarily. So this is one way that you might track this training, you could take a picture of this slide, we will also make this PowerPoint available to you after the presentation, so you could just maintain the entire, entire PowerPoint as evidence that you took the training. But if you wanted to just keep a record, um, this one page record, you could take a screenshot of this. Uh, the important pieces to remember that you need to keep, keep track of is who the, who provided the training. So in this case, it's staff of the Oregon School Board Association, and then the date that you took the training. And we have the live date that we're doing this live, and if you're watching a video replay of this, then you would just need to put the date that you watched the, the video recording of this webinar. Okay, so the purpose of Oregon's public meetings law, and I'm just gonna read through the statute because anytime you're kind of thinking about, um, is this a public meeting, should I follow the notice requirements that Therese is gonna talk about, um, in a little while, you need to keep in mind kind of the general, uh, thought behind our Oregon government public meeting law. And that is the Oregon form of government requires an informed public aware of the deliberations and decisions of governing bodies and information upon which such decisions were made. It is the intent of the public meeting law that decisions of governing bodies be arrived at openly. So generally, your meetings should be open, the deliberations and the way you reach decisions as a governing body should be done in public. And there are a variety of times when you can do things in executive session, which Spencer will talk about later. But for the most part, you need to make sure that you're making decisions, um, and deliberating towards those decisions in an open meeting that's been properly noticed, and Therese will walk us through all of those requirements here in a bit. Again, there are several terms underlined here, those are terms that are defined in law, and we will talk about those, um, now. I'm gonna start going through the definitions, and this is gonna be a little bit, um, tedious, but it is helpful to know these definitions and, uh, be able to refer back to them when you have questions about whether or not something is subject to a public meeting. What is a public meeting? Meeting means the convening of a governing body, of a public body, for which a quorum is required in order to make a decision or deliberate toward a decision on any matter. And so all, again, all of these terms that are underlined are defined, and we will talk through those. Um, a simple kind of way of thinking about this is if there's a quorum and there's a discussion, deliberation, decision on public body business, then that is a meeting. What is a governing body? A governing body means the members of any public body which consists of, make decisions for or recommendations to a public body on policy or administration. And then it's important to keep in mind that a governing body is different than a public body. Uh, sometimes these definitions overlap, but not always. So a public body is the state, any regional council, county, city, or district, or any municipal or public corporation, or any board, department, commission, council, bureau, committee, or subcommittee, or advisory group, or any other agency thereof. And so, uh, a school district, an E S D, a community college, a charter school would be considered public bodies, as would the boards of those, of those public bodies.
This AI tool will create a stunning ebook direct from your content, whether it's a Microsoft Word document or a Google doc.
Convening. So convening has many different, four different, uh, definitions here, some of them are obvious and we've known about them for years, and other ones have not been particularly specified in the statute until recently. So the first one, gathering in a physical location, that's kind of the easiest, uh, one, that's typically when you get together in person with your board. Historically, that's how, uh, school board meetings and other public body meetings happened, is everybody gathered together in a physical location. And then over time, we've started to use technology to meet, you know, you might have a board member that, uh, calls in over the phone. Everybody's in person, but one person's on the phone, and then over time, we've transitioned to sometimes, uh, a meeting has taken place completely over Zoom or some other electronic pa, platform, and there's no one physically, uh, in one place, that is still convening. Uh, the other two are not as obvious in what they mean. Uh, using serial electronic written communication among participants could also be a convening. And so example of this could be a board secretary sends out an agenda to all the board members, and the board members start replying all and explaining why they will vote yes on certain action items. So that would be a convening, and most likely it would not have been properly noticed, Therese will talk about what those no's requirements are in a little bit. Um, but this is where you can unintentionally convene as a board, if you start having serial written communications among your, your board members. Uh, the last one, you're using intermediary to communicate among participants. Uh, so an example of this could be the board chair reaches out to each board member to get their thoughts on an upcoming vote, and with each successive conversation, the board chair shares how other board members feel and will be voting. So this is another situation where a board can find themselves accidentally having a public meeting through an intermediary, um, and that could cause some problems. Decision. Uh, decision means any determination, action, vote, or final disposition upon a motion, proposal, resolution, order, ordinance, or measure on which a vote of a governing body is required at any meeting at which a quorum is present. And so at board meetings, you may make decisions, and it may be called something different, but if you are making a decision by vote, then that is a decision. So it doesn't matter if you're calling it a resolution, an order, somebody makes a motion, if you are voting on something, that is making a decision. Deliberation is also, uh, defined, and that includes a discussion or communication as part of the decision-making process, so it's important to keep in mind that part of deliberating could be one-way communications, where, um, a communication is sent from one board member to the others, and that communication is used as part of the decision-making process, that is part of the deliberation. Communication, expression or transmission of information from one person to another through verbal, non-verbal, written, or electronic means. Non-verbal means it includes gestures such as thumbs up and thumbs down, as well as sign language. So again, this is, uh, written right into the rule, uh, it makes it clear that there are forms of communications that are non-verbal, and that would count in a, in the definition of communication. Decision-making process is defined in the law, the process a governing body engages in to make a decision, such as identifying or selecting the nature of the decision to be made, gathering information related to a decision to be made, identifying and assessing alternatives, weighing information, and making a decision. So that's the decision-making process. Discussion means the consideration or debate, debate of a matter. And discussion is not limited to the verbal commu, communication, that includes the consideration of the matter. Intermediary means a person who is used to facilitate communications among members of a governing body about a matter subject to deliberation or decision by the governing body by sharing information received from a member or members of the governing body with other members of the governing body. The term intermediary can all, can include a member of the governing body. And so in the case of a superintendent, or in a school board, an intermediary may be a person like a superintendent who is facilitating a communication between different board members. Quorum is defined in the law as the minimum number of members of a governing body required to legally transact business. And there's a statute that applies to school districts, um, and defines quorum as the majority of the members of the school district's school board shall constitute a quorum. The affirmative vote of the majority of members of the board is required to transact any business. And the E S Ds and community colleges have a similar statute, just a different, uh, statutory, uh, reference, and those are on the slide there. For charter schools, it may vary by charter school, so you wanna look at your bylaws or charter agreement, and if you can't tell by looking at those two documents, please reach out to legal counsel, and, uh, either me or your designated legal counsel can help you figure out what a quorum is for purposes of a charter school. Serial electronic written communication, so this is also defined in the law. A series of successive or sequential communications among, among members of a governing body using written, electronic means, including emails, texts, social media, and other electronic applications that communicate the written word. And Therese is gonna talk in a little bit more detail about, uh, that particular topic when we get to that section then.
A man who works hard, sweats hard.
Old Spice swagger fights sweat, so coach thought.
So when do public meeting laws apply? So they, public meeting laws apply to your regular meetings, so those are your meetings that when you have your organizational meeting, usually in July, when you set your meetings for the year, uh, those are your regular meetings. Uh, and public meeting law also applies to special meetings, so during the year, you have your regular meetings already scheduled, but sometimes there's a need to schedule a special meeting to consider something that's come up, that comes up between your regularly scheduled meetings, and you cannot wait till the regularly scheduled meeting. Uh, emergency meetings, this one doesn't happen as often and has to include an actual emergency, uh, something that would require the board to get together, together urgently. Um, public meeting law also applies to executive sessions, and Spencer's gonna go into a lot more detail about executive sessions later. Uh, and then finally, meetings help for the purpose of either presenting information to the governing body to prepare the governing body for a regular or special meeting, or to allow the governing body to engage in preliminary discussions or deliberations. And oftentimes, you are calling these work sessions or workshop meetings, public meeting law would apply to those meetings as well. Public meeting laws apply to decision-making bodies, um, and a decision-making body is a body with the authority to make decisions for the public body on policy or administration. If a body meets the standard of its decision-making authority, includes the power to exercise governmental power and act on behalf of the public body. So definitely, uh, for the most part, your, you know, your school board is a decision-making body, um, it, it can make decisions on behalf of the public body. Public meeting laws also apply to advisory bodies, so an advisory body is a body with authority to make recommendations to a public body on policy or administration. So if you set up a committee of your board as an advisory committee, and that body has the authority to make a recommendation to your full board, then public meeting law applies, and we will talk a little bit more in detail about committees, um, and subcommittees and public meeting laws applying. Um, but it's just important to remember that public meeting law may apply, and most likely will apply, to any kind of committee that your, uh, board is creating. Public meeting laws do not apply to fact-gathering bodies, so bodies with the, with only the authority to gather purely factual information for a public body, and that do not have the authority to make decisions or recommendations. So for example, if your board was interested in learning more about AI, for example, and you tasked two of your board members with going out and gathering information about different AI technologies, and they brought that back to your board for the board to consider, as long as they weren't making some sort of recommendation or decision, that would not have to be, uh, subject to the public meeting laws. Uh, bodies advising individual public officials, so bodies appointed by an individual public official with authority to make recommendations only to that individual public official who has the authority to act on the body's recommendation, and is not required to pass the recommendations on, unchanged to a public body. So in the case of schools, that might be a superintendent or a director of a charter school that creates, uh, a, a body that's going to make recommendations to that superintendent or director, and that superintendent or director makes a decision on their own. If that superintendent or director has to take whatever that recommendation is up to the board for a decision, then that would not, uh, that would be a public meeting that would need to be noticed, and this exception would not apply. So this only applies if that public official that the body is reporting to has the authority to make recommend, or decisions on their own without the, the board's, uh, input or authority. And then finally, public meeting laws do not apply to certain multi-jurisdictional bodies, uh, and these are bodies whose Oregon members do not constitute a majority of governing bodies' voting members. I'm not exactly sure what their intent here was, but what I'm imagining is, for example, if you had, um, less than a quorum of your board members on the OSBA board, the OSBA board is a multi-jurisdictional body, um, that wouldn't be a problem. But if every single member of a particular board was on the OSBA board, then that might be something required to have, uh, a public meeting notice in your district. I'm not aware of that happening, but that's one example I could think of. Also not a meeting, uh, onsite inspections of any project or program, so if your entire school board wants to go see a new CTE program that just started in the district, uh, you can do that, and that's not a meeting that you have to notice. Your whole board can go to a national, regional, or state association meeting, and that is not a meeting that you have to notice. Um, social gatherings, as a board, you can meet as a full board for a social gathering. In this case here, it involved a school board that had a barbecue, and somebody, uh, was concerned about whether that was a public meeting, and the Court of Appeals said, no, boards, school boards can't have social gatherings. Now, the caveat with all three of these things is if you go and see a, a program, or you attend a conference, or you have a social gathering, you can do that, but it would become a public meeting if you start, uh, trying to decide or deliberate any decision while you're at that particular event or pro, program. So the key would be to avoid deliberating or making decisions about anything regarding the district, or the charter school, or community college, or E S D while you're at one of those events. Uh, these are newer things to add into the law, not a meeting, so purely factual or educational in nature, and that can be no deliberation or decision on any matter that might reasonably, reasonably come before the governing body. That would not be a meeting, uh, not related to any matter that at any time could reasonably be foreseen to come before the governing body for deliberation or decision, so like if a, if you're, a quorum of your board, or a whole board was emailing each other, texting each other, had a, just had a conversation at a, at a social gathering about, you know, who you want to be elected mayor of the city, um, that would not be a public meeting because the board's never going to be voting on the mayor of the city together. That's just not business that ever comes before the school board, so it's just not related and not, doesn't have to be, uh, noticed as a public meeting. And then finally, non-substantive in nature, such as communications relating to scheduling, ways of absence, and other similar matters. So frequently, when you're scheduling your board meetings or special meetings, you might communicate via email or text, hey, are you available Tuesday night at five? And people start responding yes or no, or I have to, I'm not available till five thirty, and those kinds of communications, that would not be a public meeting because it's non-substantive in nature, you're just talking about scheduling. So that's something that we've known, um, for a while, but now this is in the law, so it's really nice that we have clarity in the law around that. And I, I've touched on this a couple of times now, but whether or not public meeting law applies to committees, subcommittees, advisory committees, um, is if, if that committee, subcommittee, advisory committee has the authority to make a decision for a public body. So if the board has authorized that committee, subcommittee, to make a decision for the public body, or if that group has the authority to make recommendations to the public body, then those are public meetings, and they need to be noticed. And again, one of these committees or subcommittees could be two or more board members. Okay, and with that, I'm going to turn it over to Therese. Thank you, Katie. So we discussed what a meeting is and when public meetings law applies, so now we're gonna discuss the required elements. Um, and these determine district out of habit, um, but as Katie mentioned earlier, you know, all of these rules and laws apply equally to community colleges, charter schools, and E S Ds as well, where they are different, I'll point that out. All right, so first and foremost, public meetings must be open to the public, um, except as otherwise permitted under the law, which is, uh, under executive session, and we'll talk about that in more detail. Um, the law prohibits a quorum of the governing body from being in private for the purpose of deciding on or deliberating towards a decision on a matter. And so all of these requirements that we're going to go over are what you need to establish to make sure the, the meeting is not held in private. So public meetings must comply with certain location requirements. Uh, the location of public meetings generally must be within the geographic boundaries of the public body. For school boards, this is generally gonna be the district boundaries. Uh, the meetings could also be held at the administration headquarters if that was outside of, um, the geographic boundaries or the nearest practical location, um, or the law does allow for holding a public meeting, but in Indian and Oregon, I've not seen that come up. Um, and the location must be accessible to persons with disabilities, which I'll talk about, um, in a minute. I wanna, uh, mention when we're talking about location, um, two things, one, um, you know, for some, uh, virtual charter schools, um, there may be sometimes a question about where that meeting should be held, um, and I would say generally, that's a place where public bodies and administration headquarters is probably the best to be in a physical location. Um, and then, uh, we also get questions about the location for a board retreat, and whether or not the board can have a retreat outside of the boundaries of the, the district, for example. If that retreat meets the criteria to be a public meeting, that we need to go through, then, um, it should, then the location of the retreat should be held within the boundaries of, or should meet these criteria that I just mentioned. Um, and it should not be somewhere far field, um, because it needs to be open to the public, and that means, um, the public of the district. All right, so there are a few exceptions, however, um, for the location of a public meeting. If there's a training session where there's no deliberations toward a decision, right, and then it's, it's not gonna necessarily meet the definition of a public meeting that I'm giving you over, and that's not one that has to meet those location requirements. A joint meeting of governing bodies or of a governing body and Oregon Indian tribal officials is a, another situation where it could be held in a different location. And then finally, if there's an actual emergency that necessitates immediate action, then that's a, that's a situation where you don't necessarily have to meet those specific location requirements. Uh, there's also, under Oregon law, meetings, uh, the public meetings may not be held in a location that discriminates on the basis of several protected classes, such as race, power, creed, sex, sexual orientation, gender, identity, national origin, age, or disability. Um, this kind of furthers the idea that anyone can attend public meetings. I've not seen this come up, but I imagine that we may see questions about this in the coming years, um, especially for someone who are charter
especially for some of our charter school boards that sometimes meet in buildings that are owned and operated by other community organizations. And in addition to holding the meeting in a location where discrimination is not practiced, the meeting must also be in a place that is accessible to persons with disabilities. And the board must also provide an interpreter for individuals who are deaf or hard of hearing if they're requested at least forty-eight hours in advance. And there's no, I want to point out that while we're talking about the interpreter language, there's no requirement under public meetings law to translate public meetings to different languages. This is something that your district should just consider based on needs of your district and then provide any communication supports that might be appropriate. All right. It is required under Oregon Public Meetings Law to make all meetings accessible remotely through technological means to the extent reasonably possible and provide opportunities for a member of the general public to remotely submit oral and written testimony if in-person oral and written testimony is also allowed. And we'll talk a little bit about virtual meeting, a little bit more about virtual meetings in the next slides. Meetings may be held entirely virtually where board members attend remotely and there's no physical location for members of the public to attend. One thing I want to point out, then if a member of the public body is allowed to attend remotely, Oregon rules do say that members of the media must be allowed to attend remotely as well. This is a new rule. For a virtual meeting, there's no requirement, if you have a virtual meeting, there's no requirement that you make a physical location available. It's sufficient to provide electronic means to at least listen to the meeting. Or, you know, as I mentioned, to at least reasonably possible provide a full remote participation option. And so there's no requirement that you necessarily have a, you know, somewhere after the shift, for example, where you can attend even if everyone else is participating virtually. All right, so we've discussed who may attend a public meeting and where it must be held. So now I want to talk about all of the requirements of providing notice about a public meeting. The rules require that a notice of a meeting that is open to all members of the public contain at least the following information, the prime date and location, the electronic link for telephone access information, a list of the principal subjects anticipated to be considered at the meeting. And generally, that's accomplished by, by the agenda to the public. But that does not mean that you cannot add subjects to be considered at the meeting once you are in a public meeting. Boards do have the right to add subjects to the, to the agenda. And then finally, notice of a public meeting must also include the name, telephone number, and email address of a person to contact if someone needs to request an interpreter or other communication aids, or if you're fighting on providing a sign language interpreter or other communication aid that you don't know that will be provided, right? And thus to comply with that law that you must make, you know, provide some accommodations to those who are deaf or hard of hearing. So to provide notice to the public, the method which is sufficient and easiest to meet is to post notice of the meetings continuously on your website. And such as an agenda. If you do not have a website, then there are other options, such as the Oregon Public Meetings website. And then there's kind of a whole list in the rule that we have on our slide here of other means that will provide notice to the public. We do encourage districts to go ahead and review your practices to ensure that this is adequate because of some of these recent changes, such as, you know, including information about in contact for an interpreter for those who might need it who are deaf or hard of hearing. Notice is generally accomplished by district staff, but these requirements are applicable to the boards. All right, so in addition to the requirement to provide notice to the general public, there is also a requirement to provide actual notice to interested persons, those who are known to the district that are interested in receiving notice of a public meeting. And the rule says that this can be done using mailing lists, listserv, social media, or any other means reasonably populated to provide actual notice. We would, you know, maintaining a list is a safe and easy way to meet this requirement. But if you have any concerns or questions about it, we recommend that you reach out to us or your general counsel to make sure that you're reading this requirement. Just like with the notice to the, to the interested persons, you also have an obligation to provide actual notice to members of the media who have requested it. And to satisfy that is either by providing them the notice in the method that the media represent, if they request, if they request a specific method, or you have the discretion to provide that notice by any other means reasonably populated to provide that. You're not required to provide notice to media representatives in the way that they ask. All right, so there is a special requirement for notice of public meetings for ESDs. ESDs are required to provide notices of their public meetings on the Oregon Transparency Website to the extent practicable. And this is a requirement that is also for, on state agencies. All right. So what about notice of meetings not open to the public? The notice, if there's a meeting that's not going to be open to the public, the notice has to include additional information. You must include the specific statutory citation and appropriate subsection and paragraph which authorizes you to enter into a portion of the meeting that is closed to the public. And a general description of what that statutory authorization is. For example, you could add on to your agenda citation to OR S-192-662A to consider the employment of a public officer, including staffer or agent. Right? That's an example of something that you could add that would satisfy, you know, that requirement to provide the extra notice. And then if the executive session is part of an open meeting, so which is most common, right? A board has an open meeting and then switches into executive session because the acting officer must identify in the opening session that same statutory provision in the general description of what it is as the reason for going into a session that's closed to the public. And Spencer's going to talk more about what executive session means and who's allowed and all that stuff. All right, so when do you have to provide notice of a public meeting? For a regular meeting, you should provide as much notice as reasonably possible, but no less than forty-eight hours in advance notice. For a special meeting, you must provide notice at least twenty-four hours in advance. And then there is an option to have an emergency meeting where you meet with less than twenty-four hours notice to the public. And you only provide notice as is appropriate to the circumstances. There is an obligation to attempt to contact media and other interested persons if going into that, to an emergency meeting. And then if you rely on the emergency meeting statute to kind of go into a meeting with less than twenty-four hours notice, you should, in your minutes, describe what the emergency was, justified having your meeting with less than twenty-four hours notice, and why it could not be delayed for twenty-four hours. All right. So we've discussed who can attend, where the public meeting must be held, what sort of notice must be provided. And now I'm going to talk a little bit about your record keeping obligation. You are required to keep minutes of your public meetings. And they must include a true reflections of matters discussed and reviews of participants, as well as all members of the governing body present, all motions, proposals, reservations, orders, ordinances, and measures that are proposed and how and whether this position was, the results of all votes, and the vote of each member by name, if your board has twenty-five or fewer members, the substance of any discussion on any matter, and a reference to any document that's discussed at the meeting. All of these are the required elements for your minutes. And we often get the question about when do minutes need to be available? There's no specific requirement in public meetings law as to when the meetings need to be available, but the law does say they need to be available within a reasonable time after the meeting. And so, you know, the law does recognize that it takes some time to create the minutes. These minutes are public records and need to be retained permanently under Oregon's rules about retention of public records. Because they are public records, they must be disclosed upon request. There are some exceptions for executive session minutes, however, which are generally going to be confidential. And so we're going to discuss executive session meeting minutes next. So even when you have a meeting that's open to the public, there's still a requirement to create and retain minutes. And the requirement, the content requirements are the same, with the exception of some, you know, involved students and Spencer's going to go a bit more. You're not required, if someone requests your executive session minutes, you're not required to disclose them if the disclosure is inconsistent with the purpose for which the meeting was authorized to be held. So there's no guarantee that you'll ever have to disclose your executive session minutes, but it's generally not the case. Of course, if you have someone who requested a copy of your executive session meeting minutes, then I would request that you go ahead and speak with your general counsel or basically so that we can kind of help you work through that request. All right, so we also get questions about keeping recordings of meetings instead of written minutes. The Oregon Public Meetings Law does allow for maintaining a recording of a meeting as minutes if the recording has all the required pieces of the minutes. But the Oregon Secretary of State requires that school board meeting minutes, you have to do hard copy. So there is, there is a process to get away from the Secretary of State's Archives Division if you want to keep your recordings as or minutes. I would recommend that if you're considering that process, that you work with the Archives Division. And, you know, we have also gotten the question about whether or not a transcript of a recording, if it's approved by the board as minutes, would count. And it probably, if it has all the content requirements and you're maintaining it in hard copy, then it probably meets both those requirements. All right. Speaking of recordings, this year, a new law went into effect that requires school districts, ESDs, community college districts, and public universities post video recordings of non-executive session meetings within seven days of the meeting. These recordings need to be posted to your website or to a social media site. If the district facilities lack of audio internet access, then an audio recording is sufficient to comply with this law. And this does not apply to smaller school districts that have fewer than fifty, eighty. And also, of course, the requirement to post a recording of the minutes, the meeting, does not apply to executive session. All right, so now we're going to talk about the roles, the role of members of the public at a public meeting and the role to participate. Public meetings law does not have any requirements of a right to participate or a right to provide public testimony or public comments. It's just a right to know what's going on. However, there are a few times where boards must allow public comment, such as, you know, budget approvals, charter approvals, prior to using certain requirements for executive session. And then, of course, many boards allow for public comment because it can be a useful tool. So if you do allow for public comment, then there are a few requirements that you need to follow under Oregon Public Meeting Law. When public testimony is permitted, then you do need to allow for oral testimony by telephone, video, other electronic or virtual means if you're allowing for in-person oral testimony. And similarly, the same for written testimony, including electronic, if you're allowing for in-person written testimony, but you can be required that it be submitted in a way. You just have to have parity between the two. And then also, when you're allowing for public comment, the presiding officer of the board has authority under Oregon Public Meeting Law to keep order and impose reasonable restrictions to make sure that the meeting is conducted efficiently and orderly. So this generally, you know, and so this means you can regulate the order of public comment, the length of how long you allow someone to speak in public comment, and also limit appearances to people who are only going to comment on subjects that are on the agenda for a level. But I do want to point out that boards should be careful to avoid viewpoint discrimination, which could result in a complaint and a First Amendment violation. And to work with their general counsel or, if there's a question about that, there has been litigation on this issue. But if you're dealing with issues surrounding public comment and we've been found to restrict public comment on certain subjects, this is something that, you know, just be mindful that there are some potential legal ramifications of that. All right, so the public meetings law also has requirements for voting. Any action by the board must be taken during a board meeting. This is typically done by votes of the board. Votes must be public and the vote of each member and the result of the vote must be included in the minutes. The board is not allowed to use secret ballots. Written ballots are allowed, but in order for them to not be secret ballots, the written ballot must include the name of the vote and then be announced during the meeting. These are all of the requirements and new rules. All right, so Haley discussed serial communications among, what serial communications are, a new rule which defines serial communications. Serial communications among a forum of board members can be considered a meeting of the board. This is prohibited by public meetings law. Because those meetings, if it's a series of communications among a forum of the board where there's discussions happening about, that are kind of leading towards a decision, even if no decision is made in the serial communications, if they are discussions leading towards a decision, that is considered a meeting, but it is not a meeting that meets all of those public meetings law requirements that we just discussed because it's not, it's not open to the public, it's not, you know, it doesn't meet the location requirements, there's no notice, you know, all of that. So the, the new Oregon rules on public meetings law specifies that a series of communications, whether directly or through intermediaries, cannot be used for the purpose of deliberating on any matter that is within jurisdiction of the governing body. And the rules go on to list the methods of serial communications that could result in a serial meeting. So this includes in-person communications, telephone calls, videos, video conferencing, written communications such as emails, text messages, other messaging applications, use of one or more intermediaries to convey information among members, any other means of conveying information. And the intermediary does not have to be a member of the board, you know, as Haley walked through that definition. The intermediary could be someone who is not a member of the board if that person is being used to convey information among members of the board. If there are specific scenarios that you're concerned about with regard to this, I suggest that you contact your general counsel and make sure that your practices are consistent with the public meetings law requirements. With that, I think I'm ready to hand the notice to Spencer.
Awesome, there's a couple of really good questions in the chat waiting for you, Teresa. So have fun with those. No, a couple of the questions, and if we're unable to answer your questions live here, Uh, no, a couple of the questions, and if we're unable to answer your questions, um, live here, um, don't hesitate to reach out to us individually, um, by email. Um, a lot of them do defend, depend on the specific facts and how a committee might be set up and what their role might be. Um, and whether or not one of the exceptions in Public Meeting Law may or may not apply. So we will, um, answer questions as we get to the end as well. Um, but thank you for all those questions, um, and we are, we're flying, we're going faster than I, than I thought, so, um, so I, I can spend all sorts of time. Uh, we're going to talk about executive sessions though, um, really quickly, and you're probably very familiar with executive sessions and what they are. Um, and what the law says is that you are allowed to meet, hold an executive session during a regular special or emergency meeting. Um, but in order to do so, there's a couple of things that you need to make sure that you do. The first is you want to make sure that you identify what law authorizes you to use executive session. We're going to go through a number of these today. Many of you have them in your board policies. Um, list out the primary pieces, the primary reasons that you could go into executive session. Most of them are listed in O R S one ninety-two six sixty, section two, though there's a few more in O R S three thirty-two. So, um, we're going to talk through those, but that is important that before going into executive session, you need to make sure that you're stating why and what, why you're going into executive session and what law gives you the authority to go into executive session, um, to discuss that. Um, the law only allows you to go in for certain reasons. Um, and like I said, you must identify, um, what you're going, what you're going in for. As board members, it's very important that you understand what you're going into executive session for. Um, if you have questions as to whether or not this is an appropriate reason, then please reach out to the legal counsel, reach out to the Ethics Commission, um, because that's on you as individuals, um, if you attend an executive session that, um, is not an appropriate reason to go into executive session. The actual definition for executive session might be a little bit, um, different than what you might think. Um, but the actual definition is any meeting or part of a meeting which is close to certain persons for deliberations on certain matters. So if you exclude people, um, from a meeting, then that's going to be considered an executive session potentially. Um, so you want to just keep that in mind. Um, generally, it's the board in attendance, though it's very common to have additional individuals, uh, such as the superintendent or your administrator. Um, it could, you could have legal counsel present, you could have other staff members present, um, you could have students present, you could have their representatives present. Um, so there's a lot of other individuals that, um, may be added to an executive session. But remember, it's the board's meeting and the board, um, can have whoever it feels is necessary to be in attendance, um, at that executive session.
Get your free copy of my new bestselling book, Commercial Real Estate Investing for Beginners. All you
As we mentioned earlier, executive sessions can be part of regular, special or emergency meetings. So they can just be an agenda item on any one of those meetings. Um, they can be all separate, so you can have an, an executive session, um, you know, on a Tuesday at nine A M. that does not have any open portion um, to it, there's no open meeting part to it, um, and you can hold an extension for that reason. It's important to keep in mind that executive sessions are still public meetings. They're not held in public, they're not accessible to the public, but the other public meeting requirements are still going to apply. And that includes notice, minutes, location, accessibility, those types of things. Um, you might ask, well, why, why is that? Well, you may have, um, members of the, you may have a student or a family member, you may have a member of the media that has a, that's going to be attending and needing to make sure that your meeting is physically accessible, um, to those who might be attending. A few things that are unique to executive session. Um, first, you are generally not allowed to make any final action or make any final decision, really take any votes, um, in an executive session. Um, you can come from general informal consensus, you say, yeah, I think we know where we're going, um, coming out of this executive session. You're generally not allowed to vote. Um, there are some exceptions around some student-related issues, um, out of O R S three thirty-two, um, but, um, for the most part, you cannot vote in an executive session. Uh, like I mentioned, the news media is allowed to attend executive session generally. Um, there's a few exceptions, um, labor negotiations is one of those exceptions, um, student issues, and then current litigation or litigation that's likely to be filed if the news media is a party to the litigation. Um, so those are the reasons why news media may be excluded. Um, news media should be instructed not to report. So as you're going into executive session, many, um, boards have a, a script that they read that says, we, you are specifically instructed not to report on what is discussed, um, in the executive session. Um, and then again, the board and any of the board's guests that they are choosing to invite into the executive session, um, would be allowed to attend. One of the questions that often comes up is who is considered news media? Now, I think it's important to think about, most of the public meeting laws were written in the nineteen seventies and were largely unchanged until, you know, until this last group of public meeting laws, um, were changed. Now, if we think about who a person or what the news media looked like in the nineteen seventies compared to what it might look like now, things might be very different. Um, there is an Attorney General opinion from two thousand and sixteen that talks about who would be considered representative of the news media, especially looking into the, um, blogging or internet media, um, different pieces, different ways that, um, information is, um, shared, and who would be considered there. So if you have questions about whether a particular entity within your, um, within your district or within your area might be a member of the news media or someone is claiming to be a member of news media, this would be a great place to start. Also recommend that you work with legal counsel, um, in making a determination there as to whether or not, um, those people might be allowed to attend your executive sessions. The next piece is around executive sessions with virtual attendees. Um, we discussed earlier that open meetings must be, uh, available virtually, but this is not the case for executive sessions. Um, you are allowed to have, um, an executive session that is not made available virtually. However, and as Reese mentioned earlier, if any member of the governing body or anybody's attending that executive session virtually, then members of the news media need to be allowed to attend virtually as well. Um, so just keep that in mind if you're holding an executive session that is only going to be in person, um, you know, but then if somebody, one of the board members needs to attend virtually because, you know, they're sick or they can't make it or for some other reason, that same opportunity needs to be extended to members of the news media to attend virtually as well. Announcing executive session, um, is important, um, and it's a little bit different depending on how you are, how the executive session is coming into be. Um, but you need to make a public announcement of that statutory authorization. Um, your authority to do the executive session has to be made prior to that executive session. And if only an executive session is being held, so this is a, a meeting that does, an executive session that doesn't have an open meeting component to it before or after it or anything like that, then the notice that, um, uh, the notice that you're going to be holding an executive session needs to include that statutory authorization. So you could say, the board is holding an executive session on, you know, Tuesday, February seventeenth at nine A M. The purpose of their, the board will meet an executive session under O R S and then use the statutory provision and explain, you know, very briefly the reason why you're using executive session. And I generally recommend that boards just use the stat, the language directly from statute, um, that follows the, the authorization piece. And that's, so that's if you're holding an executive session that is just an executive session. If you're holding an executive session that is part of an open meeting, um, so it's just an agenda item of a meeting that's being held, um, open for the public, the announcement needs to be made, um, during the portion of the meeting open to the public. So in this situation, it may just be one of your regular board meetings and agenda item four happens to be an executive session. So when you get to agenda item four, the Presiding Officer is simply going to say, we're now going to meet in an executive session, cite the statutory provision and then, um, and then share the, you know, the little word from statute, and then the board can go into executive session. Um, these are all going to be in the, you know, in the written minute, or written notice, um, and then included in the minutes as well. This is a, a sample script from, um, the Oregon Attorney General's Public Meetings Manual. Um, many of you probably use this or use something similar that simply states, we're going into executive session for these reasons. Um, media are allowed to attend, others are asked to leave, representatives of the media are specifically directed not to report on, you know, information here. Um, but it can be a great resource, it can be helpful for you, um, if you're, if you're trying to figure out, what do I need to say? Excuse me, here's something that you can say, um, and just have ready for you. We're going to go through, um, several of the common reasons for executive session. Now, these aren't all of them, um, there's more. These are the ones that we typically see in the school district, E S D, charter school and community college realm. Um, if you also serve on another type of board, then you might think, oh, he skipped this one. Well, that's probably because it doesn't really apply to, um, too much to school boards or in the, in the education realm. Um, and you'll notice some asterisks listed as well. We'll all talk about some of the prerequisites or the unique characteristics around those particular executive sessions. Um, the first, um, is to consider the employment of a public officer. Um, as board members, this is probably only going to show up when you're hiring a superintendent, an executive director, a president. Um, that's typically where this would come up. The asterisk is there because there are prerequisites for this. You can't just say, hey, we're going to meet tonight in executive session and hire a new superintendent. There are things that you've got to notice it, there's other pieces that you're required to do before you can go into executive session on this. The second one here is perhaps the most common or the, you know, the one we hear about the most, um, to consider the discipline dismissal or dismissal or disciplining of, or to hear complaints brought against a public officer, employee, staff member or individual agent. So if a complaint is filed against a staff member, um, this would be the provision that likely would get you into executive session. Um, there are some, some asterisks listed here. Part of this includes that you have to notify that individual ahead of time and give them the option for an open or an executive session. Um, so it's the person that the complaint is about that would, um, have the decision there. The third bullet here is around to conduct deliberations with persons, um, designated, designated by the governing body to carry on labor negotiations. So again, one of the unique, um, labor pieces, the board can meet with its labor negotiators to discuss, um, to discuss strategies, to discuss the process, um, that can be done in executive session. Um, two E is the next one here around real property transactions. Uh, next one, um, is two F, and that's to consider information or records that are exempt by law from public concession. Um, in the school setting, this is probably most common to see, um, student records that are protected by F R P A. Um, so if the board needs for some reason to review student records, um, that could be done in executive session. Also personnel records are generally going to be, um, protected from disclosure, also attorney-client privileged information. So if you have something from legal counsel that is protected by attorney-client privilege, the board could go into executive session to review, um, those records. The next one here, um, is two H, to consult with counsel, to consult with legal counsel concerning the legal rights or duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. And for this provision, there's two key pieces. One, this counsel has to be present. Um, so your legal counsel needs to be present either in person or virtually, you know, they could be on the phone or available by Zoom, um, that would be permissible. But it also has to be with regard to current litigation or litigation that's likely to be filed. It can't just be, um, you know, just some random topic that, um, that the board would like to discuss.
Outcome IQ is Capgemini's A I system that turns millions of unpredictable
The next one, um, is two I, um, excuse me. And that's to review the employment-related, um, performance of the chief executive officer or, um, you know, another employee. And as a board, you are generally only going to be evaluating, um, the superintendent or the president or the executive director, the, the highest, um, official within the, um, within the body. So, um, and again, there's some asterisks here. The person being evaluated, they get the opportunity, um, to choose whether that's going to be an open or executive session. So you need to make sure that you let them know ahead of time that, um, at least twenty-four hours, one day to stay, whichever is longer, um, you need to let them know ahead of time, give them the option of, um, open or executive session. Most of the time, they're going to choose executive session, though we have seen situations where they choose to do that, um, in an open session. Um, there's also, uh, on here is two K, um, which is just another provision for executive session. It's to consider matters related to school safety, um, so anything related to school safety or safety threats, um, you're allowed to use executive session if discussing that in open session would potentially be problematic and you feel that it would be better to be in, um, executive session. A few more, don't worry, um, I know there's a lot of them. Um, the next one is two O, this is a, a very new, um, provision in the last couple of years, um, to consider matters related to the safety of the governing body and of public body staff and volunteers. So, um, if the board needs to discuss its own safety or the safety of staff or volunteers and, um, the facilities and those kinds of things, you can use executive session for that. Um, another new one for cybersecurity infrastructure and responses to cybersecurity threats. Um, so important to understand that if there's a cybersecurity issue that you want to discuss in an executive session, you certainly can. Um, it's important to note on a couple of, you know, the last few around safety, um, cybersecurity, those kinds of things, there may be situations where you determine that it's best to have some of those conversations in open session. Um, and that's perfectly allowable. Um, but if there's pieces that you feel are going to be better discussed in executive session to keep some of that information confidential, then you can go ahead and use the executive session for this. Um, and then the final two here are really unique for K twelve, so, um, around the expulsion of a minor student and really around any matters pertaining, um, to a minor's confidential education records or to a student's education records. So, um, additional reasons that you can go to executive session. Those are the primary ones, um, obviously something else could apply, and these are generally listed in, um, most of your policies. Um, just a few, and I tried to touch on these as we went through, um, but just to highlight them again. Um, two A, which is to consider the employment of a public officer, employee, um, staff member or agent, and I mentioned, well, there's some prerequisites. Well, this is just a list of some of those prerequisites that need to take place prior to going into executive session for that. Um, there are often times where we will get a phone call and then some, and a board member says, hey, we just found out that our superintendent is resigning or leaving or retiring, um, leaving the district for whatever reason. Can we go into executive session tonight and discuss our plan moving forward? And the answer is probably no, um, because in order to use two A, which is the provision that you would generally use, you've got a, a list of prerequisites, um, that include advertising the vacancy, adopting hiring procedures and those types of things. Um, so it's important to keep that in mind, um, anytime you're looking to use provision two A. Um, and I mentioned two B and two I around a complaint against a staff member or the evaluation, um, the employment evaluation of, you know, your C E O, your superintendent, president, um, executive director, those types of, types of things. You have to give them notice ahead of time before you can use executive session for that, um, because they get the opportunity to choose. Um, and so that notice to them has to be one business day or twenty-four hours ahead of time. It has to include the name of the governing body, which hopefully they're going to know anyways, um, the time, date and location of the meeting, the purpose of the executive session, and then how they could request an open hearing if that's what they would prefer. Um, so it doesn't have to have a lot of information, um, and typically if there's complaints involved, then you may be working with legal counsel and they can assist you in figuring out what information to share, um, in those situations. Next one, um, and this is just around, um, all of these that, that discuss, you know, hiring, that talk about complaints, that talk about evaluation. Um, these conversations should, in executive sessions should not include conversations around compensation, salaries and benefits. Um, those are not executive session provisions, um, especially specifically two A, two B and two I do not authorize you to talk about compensation, salaries and benefits in the executive session. So if you're going in under two A, that should really be about identifying the individual that you want to hire into that position and the conversation about the compensation would not happen. Um, same thing around an evaluation of your C E O. Um, that executive session is around evaluating that individual, not determining how much of a raise they should or should not get.
Experience contracts simplified with A I assistant. Clarify content in a click and understand.
One piece that we often get questions around is complaints against board members and whether or not executive session can be used, um, in those situations. Um, O G E C has determined that O R S one ninety-two six sixty-two B, which is the complaints against, um, a public officer, employee, staff member or individual, or individual, um, agent, does not always apply to complaints against board members. Um, the key factor is whether the governing body's charter or enabling legislation allows the governing body to discipline or dismiss their fellow board members. And with school districts, typically, you are not able to really discipline or dismiss a fellow board member. Um, so this would not be the case for, you know, school districts, E S D boards and community college boards. For charter schools, that may be a little bit different because you have different language in your bylaws around dismissal or removal of fellow board members. So if that comes up and you have questions, we encourage you to work with legal counsel. There may be a provision other than two B that applies and we can help work through some of those questions and some of those challenges that, um, may exist there. Um, mentioned earlier, um, labor negotiations and executive sessions. Um, and you can hold executive sessions to discuss deliberations with, um, those that have been designated, um, to represent you. Uh, so that's one type of an executive session. Um, the other piece though, is that labor negotiations shall be conducted in open meetings unless the negotiators for both sides request that the negotiation be conducted in executive session. So, um, the default is that negotiations are going to be in open session. Um, however, if both sides request that the actual negotiations take place in executive session, that can be done. If they're being held in executive session, then the notice requirements are gone. You know, then those executive sessions are not subject to the notice requirements in O R S one ninety-two six forty. Um, so it's a weird, kind of a weird situation. We encourage you to work with, um, legal counsel, your labor counsel, um, around that if there are questions there. But it is just an important distinction, um, to mention, um, and make sure you are aware of. With all of these executive sessions, um, and with public meeting, um, law questions, O G E C is authorized to provide information and to provide guidance, issue an advisory opinion and provide, um, written or oral staff advice, um, for such situations, especially regarding executive sessions. Um, and the, the Ethics Commission is actually really wonderful to work with, um, especially, well, they're wonderful to work with, you can reach out to them ahead of time. If it's after the fact, they may end up having to, they may open up an investigation or something like that. But if you reach out to them ahead of the time, they're wonderful to work with, they'll provide you with information, they'll give you the information that you need to keep you out of trouble. Um, and they will provide information on all types of public meeting law. Um, this is relatively new to them, just in the last several years. They've been, um, given more and more authority over, started with executive session and now it's, um, expanded to all public meeting laws. Um, but they are great to work with and they can provide, um, information for you and be really helpful, um, in that regard. O G C also has the authority to issue civil penalties of up to a thousand dollars for each board member for violations of public meeting laws. Now, this is typically, like, this isn't the way they typically work. They're not looking to issue, um, civil penalties or anything like that. That would really be only be in this, likely only be in a situation where board members intentionally, um, disregarded the law and chose to violate public meeting law. Most of the time, and I say most of the time, there haven't been a lot of complaints that have been appealed up to the Ethics Commission, um, about school board members or about public meetings in general. Um, but most of the time, they will issue a letter of instruction and say, hey, it looks like you probably violated public meeting law here. Um, we encourage you to, you know, participate in training, make sure you meet your mandatory training requirement. Um, here's some more additional guidance if you need it, um, and please don't mess up again. Um, you know, that's typically what their response is going to be, though they do have the authority, um, to issue a civil penalty. One piece on the civil penalty, if you're acting under the advice of legal counsel, then the letter of education, um, then the letter of education is going to be the response typically, that they can't issue a civil penalty. So if you have a situation coming up, especially around an executive session, and you have concerns as to whether or not this is an appropriate reason to go into executive session, you can reach out to legal counsel, you can also reach out to OGC and ask them. But if you reach out to legal counsel and legal counsel says, yes, this is an appropriate reason to go into executive session, even if a complaint is filed later on, even if the Ethics Commission determines that, hey, legal counsel was wrong and you should not have used executive session in that situation, you will be protected from any civil penalty from the Ethics Commission. There's also the possibility for a lawsuit to be filed against the district. We don't see these very often, and especially with the Ethics Commission option that we're going to talk about in a little bit. Don't anticipate seeing a lot of those, but they certainly are possible. And it's important to note that insurance policies generally don't provide coverage for individuals who intentionally violate the law. So make sure that you are staying informed and making good decisions about what public meeting courses you're making. The other, probably the biggest change to public meeting law in the last in the last few years and out of this bunch of legislation was around grievances and complaints. It used to be really that in order to file any type of a complaint, you probably had to go to the court system. And filing something through the court system is expensive and takes a lot of time. So for that reason, there really, we really haven't seen a lot of lawsuits around public meeting law. However, there's a change. And now complaints can be filed directly with the governing body. And then after going through the governing body, the governing body has a certain amount of time in order to respond. And then the individual who filed the complaint can appeal that up to the Oregon Government Ethics Commission. Now, I already messed up, I used the wrong terminology, so I'm going to correct myself. Something that is filed with the governing body, so with the district, with the ESD, the charter school, the community college, that's going to be called grievance. Now, we don't like to see that word grievance, right? Because in the education world, when we see grievance, we think collective bargaining agreement. Well, now we've got two potential reasons why you might hear the word grievance. But if you get a grievance around public meeting law, you're going to follow some procedures that we're going to work through in just a second. After that grievance has been handled by the district or with an ESD or charter school or community college, or is ignored or the timelines are not met, the person who filed that grievance can then file what's called a complaint with the Ethics Commission. So the complaint is kind of like the appeal up to the Ethics Commission and then the grievance is like the initial complaint. But that's the language I'm going to try to use, but like I said, I already messed up once, so we'll see. And any individual who believes that your board has violated public meeting law, they can file this, they can file a complaint, or messed up, they can file a grievance. So they can file a grievance directly with you as a public body, or they can go the lawsuit route, but again, expensive, time-consuming, they're probably going to start with this grievance process. As a public body, you are required to accept or receive those grievances. And the public body, you must accept grievances filed in person during your regular business hours, through first-class mail or through email. And you can accept grievances filed in other ways, but those are three ways that you're required to accept grievances that might be filed. Jump two slides real quick and then one more. Oops, sorry, back one, I guess there's a delay. Sorry. On your website, you are required to include information about how and who can, those grievances can be submitted to. And so the person in contact information and then the hours in which those grievances will be accepted. If you don't put this on your website, then the grievance can be filed with the chief administrative officer or to the chair of the public body. And I think we probably all recommend that if the chief administrative officer or the chair of your public body receives one of these grievances, you consider it submitted and you process it accordingly. If you don't have a website, you can publish this notice in the same manner as your other public, as your public meeting notices. But basically, you need to, if something is submitted, you need to make sure that you're receiving it and then you're going to process it accordingly. So once the public body receives it, you have, well, a couple of pieces for that, sorry about that. The grievance must be in writing. So you can require that it must be in writing out, and email is in writing, and electronic submission is considered to be in writing. So you don't, it doesn't have to be like on paper delivered or submitted to you. It must be written, it must be filed within 30 days of the alleged violation. So they can't go back to, you know, 2016 and say, hey, I think you violated public meeting law on this day. It's got to be timely within 30 days of the alleged violation. And then it must be filed directly with the public body. The grievance must include the name of the governing body, the date of the violation, the specific facts and circumstances, the date of the grievance, so the date that they're submitting it to you as a public body, and then the name and contact information of the person filing the grievance. There, so it doesn't have to have a ton of information. Hopefully, there's enough in the specific facts and circumstances so that you as a public body understand what the claim is and what they believe that you have violated there. But that's what the grievance might look like. Once you receive that as a public body, you have 21 days to respond. And there's really only three different responses for you. One, you can deny the facts, say, no, that did not happen. You may be able to provide additional information, you know, perhaps you have a video recording of what happened or whatever, but you might be able to say, no, those, those facts did not happen, so there's no violation. That's the first option. The second option is you can say, yes, those things happened, but it was not a violation of public meeting law because of blank. And that may be, you may include some exceptions that are included in statute, it may be some different pieces that we talked about today, but your response may say, yes, we did those things, or those things happened, but it was not a violation because, because of the law status. And then the third option is to just admit and admit, say, yes, those things happened, yes, we acknowledged that that was a violation of public meeting law. And so as a public body, whatever your response is, you have to provide a written response to the person that filed the grievance and have to file a copy of that with the Oregon Government Ethics Commission. So within 21 days, that's a very short timeline, especially where many of you meet monthly to go to receive one that say it came in three days after your meeting. You may have to schedule a special meeting in order to get this processed before that 21-day deadline. The law doesn't say anything about business days or anything, so I would generally, I would treat this as 21 calendar days from receipt of the grievance. Oh, and I, these next Next few slides, I probably kind of already covered them. And due to time, we'll probably, well, I guess with this admit, admit, this is just the third one of those options. You can rescind the decision or you can acknowledge in a public meeting that it was a violation, that you can't really rescind it, and what you're going to do to make sure that this doesn't happen again. So let's say that a meeting wasn't noticed and you didn't realize it, but for whatever reason, the notice wasn't published as everyone thought that it was. So the complaint could come in, you could say, hey, we now know that we violated public meeting law because the notice wasn't provided. If it's a decision that's easy to rescind, you could go ahead and do that. But if it's something that you can't really undo, then you would say, hey, we approved a contract that has been entered into at this point and, you know, we can't walk out of the contract right now. So we acknowledged the violation, we can't really rescind it because of these reasons, and this is what we're going to do to make sure that it does not happen again. So that can be important and helpful. This is just a visual of the timeline. Again, a person filing a grievance has 30 days to file that written grievance with the board. Once received by the board, the board has 21 days to provide a written response, both to the grievance and a copy going to the Ethics Commission. And then after that, if the person filing the grievance wants to, they can file a complaint directly with the Ethics Commission, who would then open it up and start to look, start to look at it. If someone wants to file a complaint, so they filed the grievance with the district or with the public body and it has been, you know, completed or has gone past 21 days, then the individual can file a complaint with the Ethics Commission. They're required to provide documentation of their actions, so they're required to show how they have filed the initial grievance with the public body, and they're required to provide the public body's response as well. So if someone goes directly to the Ethics Commission, excuse me, with a complaint that you have violated public meeting law, the Ethics Commission is going to say, well, did you file a grievance with the public body? And if they say no, or they don't have evidence that they filed the grievance, then the Ethics Commission is going to send them back to file a grievance with the public body. If the 30-day window has lapsed, then they're probably going to be out of luck as far as filing the grievance. Now, if they file a grievance or file the complaint with the Ethics Commission and say, hey, yes, we did file with the public body, but the public body never responded to us or it's taken longer than 21 days, then the Ethics Commission is likely going to step in and start looking into that there. When a complaint is filed against the public body, it's going to go against all members of the public body. So a complaint generally doesn't get to pick and choose which governing members will be investigated. Each governing body member will have the opportunity to respond, though. So if someone might file a grievance or a complaint identifying only a single board member, well, each board member is going to be included in that complaint. Now, if you weren't present or it doesn't apply to you for some reason, you're going to include that in your own individual response, but it is going to go against everybody. And if it goes to the Ethics Commission, there's going to be what's called consolidation. And during the preliminary stages, those complaints against all of the board members on your board, they're going to be consolidated through the preliminary hearing and the investigation stages, just for simplicity purposes. They're going to be, it's going to be investigated and so that OGC can work through that in a more timely manner than investigating any individual complaint against each individual board member. But individual determinations, final decisions will be made for each board. Dismissal, a complaint that is dismissed because the complainant failed to comply with the requirements is a procedural dismissal only, meaning that OGC could take the complaint and complaints up on their own, or a new complaint could be filed that does meet the procedural requirements. So just because something makes its way to OGC and then they have to dismiss it, it doesn't mean that that same cause of action couldn't come up for OGC in another way. A few more things really quickly regarding complaints. If the public body fails to respond within 21 days or the complainant is not satisfied with the public body's response, they can file the complaint with OGC. OGC does have the authority to investigate those complaints and OGC can impose a civil penalty of up to $1,000 to members of the governing body. And that would be the personal responsibility of those individual board members, not the responsibility of the public body as a whole. Well, OGC does have a role in when complaints are filed. OGC does also have the authority to open up an investigation, even if a complaint is not filed. So if they just hear something happening, they have the authority to do that. They aren't out watching public meetings of all across the state. They're not, you know, hopping on the Zoom and just checking to see, hey, is this district following public meeting law? But if they hear something or some, especially if something comes through the media, they certainly can open up an investigation on their own merits. I've mentioned a couple of times the possibility for public meeting lawsuits. Again, we don't see these very often, we don't anticipate seeing more of them, but it is important to note what a court can do. The court can order the governing body to redo the decision in a public meeting and can order payment, appropriate equitable relief, payment of attorney fees and those types of things. Anytime something goes to court, it does cost a lot of money and it takes a lot of time. So if you can avoid it, that can be very helpful for you. So following the complaint procedures, the grievance that might come to you and allowing it to go up to OGC and doing your best to fully respond to those types of grievances can be really helpful in reducing the potential for a lawsuit long term. And I think with that, we've gotten through all of the contents.
Have there been any complaints filed against this board in the past? And if so, what happened?
This board, no, but the Three Rivers School District Board, yes. And it was before I was the superintendent, so it was over 10 years ago, but there was a couple of complaints filed against the board and it went to, all the way to pass arbitration to settlement, so.
Does anybody, I mean, at that point, it's obviously public. Any, like, what was it about?
It was about, it was alleged, I guess, proved harassment, so board members harassing employees, you know, trying to get them to do things that the board wanted that were against the law, those kind of things. And so like intimidating them.
Did the, did the guardrails work? I mean, like, it should have been obvious way before that that that's considered board
It was kind of a, you know, I wasn't privy to all that. I was in the curriculum office, so I can't tell you how those things went down.
Cave Junction has never been cited for this ever, believe it or not. So if they can do it, we can do it.
Well, I would hope that, you know, that we would be responsive enough to the public and responsive enough to people and respectful that we wouldn't have a problem.
Where it's likely to happen, it's by accident.
Well, and I can say that when, when that did happen, I know that it wasn't something that anyone was paying attention to. So there was really no, there wasn't this type of training for boards. There wasn't the kind of conversations, you know, that we've had with like training with OSBA and our friend from Brown and Brown. Those kind of things just weren't discussed. So I, I don't know, then maybe they just didn't know any better. So, but now there's a lot more awareness around that, so.
Okay.
Wasn't there, was there a counter suit with that?
It was a failed counter suit, yeah, it didn't go anywhere. Yeah, so the, the board members were financially responsible, there's two, two board members that were found financially responsible for that.
It's not our job to deal with employees. Excuse me.
Just me.
Just him.
I try to behave, Pat.
I have just one comment on the presentation. I thought those people should be hired to do the radio commercials, you know, where they read in two seconds the small print.
That's true.
Also, I'm disappointed in the her, she parentheses by our esteemed lawyers. I have no confidence in the Oregon Board Association, none whatsoever.
Well, what we do have is a requirement to listen to this. If we disagree with it, then we have to have, and you violate it, you have a good reason to, to do it and you would have to comply with the law. But we still have to listen to this.
They never quoted the law, did they? Did they show that up there, why we had to do this?
Yeah, there's a lot of law citations.
There are a lot of law citations, yes.
Is there, is there, when I say a public corporation, you mean Nike has to sit through this?
No.
Is it just somebody that's do
Private.
Private corporation, so it's just public, okay.
They can if they want to, though.
It's, like I said, it's the, where you watch this is most by accident. That's where it sneaks up on you. Then you all run away and pretend you did nothing or claim you were discussing the type of vehicle you're driving and you're gone. Thank you. Okay, so that was exceptionally dull. But now we're going to discuss four B policy, Roman numeral two A discussion. And this is apparently an instructional commitment, well, it's instructural policy modification based upon the most recent law passed, and I believe the most recent Supreme Court opinion. Who drafted this?
We took some of the, the new information from OSBA and some of our neighboring districts who have been toiling through this, this policy. And we had a meeting with Mariah to try to get our kind of minds in the right frame of mind. And so we drafted this. And so what I wanted to do was throw out how this works. So a work session is specifically designed so the five of you can have a discussion. And so we're here to guide that discussion or answer questions, but really what we're hoping to do today is take ideas, concepts and take that information away and draft the policy that the five of you want to see and then re-present that to you for a first read. And given this policy, I would imagine it might take more than our standard first and second read. It could, it might not. But that's really the, the format for tonight is for you to have open discussion. No one has to wait for a, a motion or anything like that. You can have an open discussion. What I will say is we'll take as much information as we can and try to synthesize that into a coherent policy. And while the, the beauty of a five-person board is that some things will make it in, some things will not, and you will come to a policy that the five of you can then live with, that you feel good about. So that's the format.
Mariah, you've seen this before, I'm sorry I haven't. You've worked on it. What are your concerns? Do you have anything to report to the board on and what your concerns are?
Well, in general, I like the draft a lot better than, than what we had before. Do appreciate putting in some of the standards from other policies as far as material selection. There was one that was left off that I think would still be quite good, and that is about the vocary one. Well, there was a couple of things. the vulgarity one. Well, there was a couple of things. So in, in item six, where it talks about the selection criteria, classroom materials and then the selection instructional materials will be, so under item six, in the Grants Passes, they have more, more detailed and more, a couple of other items under that. So there, on the Grants Passes, it's item seven. So they've got, the materials will not be, what must, materials containing descriptions or depictions of human genitalia in a state of sexual stimulation or arousal, acts of human masturbation, sexual intercourse or sodomy, fondling or other erotic touching of human genitalia or public, pubic region must be deemed inappropriate and made inaccessible to students in any school setting. So that is not in our version, and I think it would be very good to have. And then they go on with an item two, and it says thresholds for objective criteria should be classified as meeting the objective criteria only if it includes descriptive or depictive elements of objective criteria. Mer reference or to actions or topics without detailed descriptions or depiction should not qualify. And then it also leaves off item B under that, where it says materials will not contain gratuitous or vulgar profanity, including ethnic gender slurs that are not founded in cultural norms of the premise of the literature. All of that, I think, would be an excellent addition to our version.
So is this, because I don't have a clue. This is, where'd this come from? Is this Grants Passes?
It's a mix of, yeah.
It's partially from some of the things that Grants Pass has been working on for months. They, they've been, yeah, they've had multiple work sessions to get a draft. And then also, this comes from our legal counsel, OSBA.
So what are we supposed to do with this?
You're supposed to read it and discuss it, you know?
Discussing is in order.
So for instance, this, this gray section here, you know, that is kind of newer language with the, the new, was it, I don't remember, was it a House bill or Senate bill that passed the ruling, you know, how we can't discriminate against people based on the author or, you know, studies that, you know, that do all of these things. So that, that's new language to be complaining with that law. But then the other stuff.
So after we get done discussing this, what are we supposed to do?
So, so as I was telling at the beginning, so we're trying to, we're taking notes, we're trying to get all the, the components that you want to see in a, in a final draft, or I guess a more complete draft. And then it will be submitted in a regular board session. So one of the things about a regular meeting is it's really hard to have an open discussion, right? I mean, there is a discussion period, but you have a whole agenda to deal with. So this work session dedicated to this allows you to have an open conversation. Say, I'd really like to see this. I don't know if this fits. We take all those notes, and then I will present you with a new draft, either on the 15th or November 19th, depending on how long it takes us to get that.
And so how do you want us to proceed through this document? Do we just come up with ideas and then you?
Well, so, yeah, so like Mariah was pointing out, this is rooted in our current policy. And so things that you see struck are things that we're trying to take out, or that would be taken out because of the new House bill. Gray material, the highlighted material is the new stuff that's required by law. Some of it's required by law. And then, so you would look at the new, really focus on the new, so the highlighted material. And then, then the discussion is really about the five of you talking about what do you want a policy to do? What do you want it to represent? And so that's what tonight's about.
Now, does the new law limit us to 1 through 7? Because I kind of enjoyed Mariah's modifications. Are we prohibited from messing with 1 through 7?
No, I don't believe you are, no.
Okay. And now, is Grants Pass currently in litigation about any of those 1 through 7? Or the, Mariah's additions, excuse me?
No, they were, there was some litigation threatened, and they came down and told them they were going to sue, Grants Pass pulled their policy. And so the lawsuit was never actually filed, but, and now they're, they're taking out a piece. And the, the reason, I, and I hate to speak about it.
And the piece that was quote offensive to them, is that not in ours?
No.
Okay.
I don't like talking about another district. But let's say hypothetically, there was a district somewhere that passed a policy.
Yes.
And the concern was really around the collective bargaining agreement with their employees.
Okay.
And it was around freedom of, academic freedom.
So could you send us those modifications?
Yeah.
Because you're the only one who has thought deeply about this.
We'll take her, we'll take her.
I have one more.
I'm sorry, so far. I, I, I have to, you never think deeply, I'm sorry. Being so mean to you. But you, you are a wonderful man, and I'm sorry. She's just, I just handled her first because she made her suggestions.
I've got one more suggestion, too. They also say in their policy, the district may choose to independently adopt core material, core instructional material which are not on the state-approved list using the state-approved selection criteria, which I believe still follows the letter of the law, correct?
That's in their policy?
It is, yeah.
We can look at it.
Yeah. No, that's fine. Yep.
So do you have anything more before I proceed?
Those were my two main ones.
The person I abused. Rick, I'm sorry.
You don't have to apologize.
Okay.
I love you, man.
Thank you.
So I'm going paragraph by paragraph, if you don't mind. I think the first paragraph is very good. It's been totally blanked out. One of the things, as you notice, it's been, I'll accept the first sentence, which is good. But when it talks about procedures to provide for ministry, blah, blah, and community involvement, this is huge. Because let me do a little background on Senate Bill 1098. It was introduced by Noah Nelson. He's a representative from Milwaukee, a known homosexual activist, which is okay. I actually sat next to him at the Parents for Good Education Gala. Anyway, his agenda for this bill was to include all homosexual LGBT books in school curriculum, to, to make sure that it's in the libraries, in the classrooms. It's not taken out, ever, ever. And he succeeded. They passed it. There were certain amendments introduced by the minority which were not introduced. So this, why we're meeting here is about the gay agenda, and how we cannot take books out that discriminate against this agenda. This is what it's all about. If you read through this, you'll see. So I recommend the first paragraph be included because it includes community involvement. One of the driving factors was to exclude people from the community from commenting on this stuff and keeping them from complaining. And they did a pretty good job.
I will say, there is another paragraph that does say that parents and interested district patrons will have the opportunity to review and recommend instructional materials.
And that is good. Yeah, I saw that, too. So that's, that's kind of redundant, but I would like to see that first paragraph included.
I believe it's, we cannot take it out of the library for that specific reason. Not that we can never take it out of the library. So if it, if it's.
Discriminatory.
Yes, but I, I'm just saying that a book that hasn't been read for five years can be thrown out because it hasn't been read for five years, not because it contains such material. They're not, nothing's in there forever.
If that's the criteria for getting rid of obscene books, we failed. It's not about how many times they're checked out. It's the content of the book.
Yes.
Yes or no?
I, I, I have a state law.
Number, paragraph two. This is, this is, this hits the heart of it. So it says, you may not prohibit use of these books written by, I'm going to go right down to lesbian, gay, and bisexual, because who cares about African, Asian, Chicanos, Latinas? It's not what this is about. You can't prohibit that. My problem, my heartburn is, the materials that include perspective, study, study of this activity, of this lifestyle. It's right, pretty blatant. So we can have a book that studies the transgender lifestyle. Is that okay with you? It's not okay with me? Not at all. So I don't think that paragraph should be even anywhere close. The next one down, the same thing. The study of this type of behavior. That second paragraph should be gone. The third paragraph has been struck out. I don't know why. It doesn't make much sense to me. The, yeah, I can see where that, the next one is pretty well, because it's covered again, as Mariah said. I think the next page, you'll see the all basic instruction material. They, it's interesting, they've, they've defined instruction material and then library material. So we've separated instruction from library books. And that sets up the books to be protected. And if you look through, you'll see in paragraph, these materials are not adopted by the board. These materials are not adopted by the board. It's repeated in a number of these paragraphs. For instance, a, a teacher brings something into their classroom, we don't have any say in that. It's not approved. It doesn't have to be approved by the board.
Well, that, again, that's our function as the board. It's defined by law, so we can't necessarily change that. And part of that is, that selection criteria would still apply.
Yes.
The teachers would be responsible for ensuring that the material they bring in are, it complies with the selection material.
What happens if the teacher brings it in? Where do we stand?
But we, where, well, I mean, that would be a Dave. So Dave can probably explain that.
Well, yeah, so if a teacher brought materials in that didn't meet the, the standard of the policy that we do adopt, then certainly that would be then under my responsibility to investigate that and then remove the material.
So I have your assurance.
You do.
Thank you. Because I, I just, losing control of the library and these kind of books bothers me. I think we should have some kind of, not each book that comes in the library.
Well, you're presuming that we had control. We didn't have control of the library books.
Why are they writing this? They're writing this because in 11, in, in November of last year, they changed the policy. Because they were getting a lot of books questioned in Oregon.
They might be writing it because the recent Supreme Court decision says that we have to give notice to parents and a right to object on instructional materials. So I'm saying a heavy use of instructional materials versus library materials to try to distinguish those. I don't know if that's, I don't know up under the Supreme Court, and I haven't read the decision, whether or not their definition of instructional materials would require us to provide notification to the parents.
Yes.
And I think they're trying to evade that requirement. That would be my guess.
If that book is used in instruction, for instance.
Well, are library books instructional material? I, I don't know how closely they defined it in that case, and I'd have to look it up.
What is a library? A library is for instruction, isn't it?
Well, a library can be self-selection.
Yeah, for recreation. But it's also a reference material. It's also used in study. You know, when you, when you went to, in school, my, excuse me, went to school, you had to read a certain, like I say, Great Expectations, you went to the library, checked it out.
I, I, you ask why I think it's there. That's why I think it's there. So whether or not the assertion is correct, whether or not library are instructional materials, I don't know, and it's something to investigate. I'll try to look it up.
That would be good. Because.
Speak on the timing. These policies are provided to the district after there's an executive order or something, and then we are bringing them to the school board. That's how you guys get your policies. These were sent to our school district in the August in the August, what we would call a policy draft.
Do we have a time limit on when we have to adopt this?
No, not, not at all. So like I had said before, Grants Pass has been doing this for a while because they're really trying to get it right. And that's one of the things that we discussed is, is developing a policy that meets some of the core tenets that you're talking about, that you're proud of, that you're happy with, rather than trying to get it done in a first and second read. It could take some time. And it could be that we have a first and second read, and you request another workshop where we can sit down and roll up our sleeves and do more discussion. So there's no timeline.
And if somebody else, this is lawyers believe this, is there somebody else who's done the work, or a good portion of it, there's nothing wrong with glomming onto it and using it, if it's good?
I would like to add a sentence. Mariah's addition at the very end is very, I thought was excellent. I would like to add in that part, something, language to the fact that this school board acknowledges their books do exist that are inappropriate and that should not be in our schools because they contain graphic violence, are sexually explicit, contain vulgar language, lack of literary merit, or educational value, and are not age-appropriate. So what we're doing, we're stating there are books out there that should not be in our library. Does that make sense?
Don't we already say that with having selection criteria, which, which would say that these books are not appropriate for our schools?
I think that just makes it more of.
I think it's redundant and unnecessary.
It's redundant, but it assigns blame.
If it belongs in a policy, maybe a resolution.
Yeah. Yeah. It's, as Mariah commented, we don't, we didn't draft that law. And we might want to make it clear from the board just not approve that law. And I think that's what you're after.
You, you, you hit the nail on the head.
Oh, I'm good.
There's only one other thing I have to read.
All right. See, when you're retired, you have a lot of spare time on your hands. There was a federal judge that made an interesting ruling. It's constitutionally impermissible for schools to provide teachers the unbridled discretion to teach about non-curricular topics, gender identity, and not to provide notice and opt-out rights based on parents' moral and religious beliefs about transgender instruction, while providing notice and opt-out rights for other sensitive, secular, and religious topics.
Is that the most recent decision?
This was even before the Supreme Court decision.
Okay.
So what, this, I think we're going to have to deal with this because it's getting to be big.
Well, I, I will talk to Bill, we'll get a copy of the latest decision and distribute it to all of us, if that's okay.
I also don't know that, what is, you know, the, the notification and everything that, that would go along with that decision, that would be, I don't know that it's appropriate for this policy. Almost, that could be its own separate policy to be in compliance with that Supreme Court decision.
It would be really nice to know what our legal guidelines are here. I mean, I, I could decide I don't like the color blue, and we could pass a resolution. And it wouldn't matter.
Well, that's a good, that's a good point, Cameron. And so that's what this process is for, right? So, and that's exactly what happened in other districts where a school board drafted a policy, all the things that they wanted, and then it got tested, and so then they got some legal guidelines. And so then they made some adjustments to get as close to that line as they could without violating state law or collective bargaining agreements, which is kind of a unique one for this policy, where it does interact with the, the contracts that we have with our teachers' union. where it does interact with the, the, or the contracts that we have with our teachers' union and our classified union. So that's the process, so we can give you those legal guidelines as we go.
That'd be great.
And like Pat said, we, we will have Bill do a little bit of research on this, but Bill doesn't really wanna deal with this policy. And so we have other, another law firm that we will use to do that too.
And for the collective bargaining, as, in, in as much as we touch those areas, will we have some expertise there we can think about?
With, with collective bargaining?
Well, you said that we had some, this is gonna touch collective bargaining.
Yeah, that's where our law firm, the Hungerford Law Firm, uh, deals with education law, that's kind of their specialty. They would be able to tell us those things, like, really give us some clarity around.
Cause we could spend a long time building a wish list that.
Yeah, well, essentially, you know, if there are, uh, suggestions that are illegal, then I would just cite those and I wouldn't put it in a draft policy. Simple as that.
I mean, I definitely wanna have it reviewed and, and, you know, any, by our lawyers, and then have them comment on, you know, what they feel is not acceptable.
Well, I'd like a list of the, your two suggestions.
Yeah.
And so we can consider them, and, uh, and we'll see if we have any more suggestions. And I think they were all good and honorable suggestions. They, they might not be appropriate for this document, for others, we may want to include them.
Just a question about, um, one-one-A, AR two, AR three? Is there an AR three on this challenge for instructional materials? It's, it's cited in the draft, and I don't know if I can find it, Dave.
I don't know that we have an AR three, there's an AR three that is suggested, and it is a reconsideration for supplemental materials.
Do we have that yet, or?
We have a version of that.
We have a version of the ARs, but, uh, since it's just discussion, no vote, I didn't bring them forward. There's about six versions of the ARs.
Yeah.
So that we get deep into the policy, then we can start digging through ARs.
Okay, that'd be good, thanks.
Uh, it is, when I was listening to your, what it does prohibit, does it, and I think it, it does, there's, there's books, excellent books by a guy named Mark Twain. And there's offensive, modern offensive language throughout that books, and I'm not willing to throw Mark Twain at the trash can. Because I, I believe in the interpretation of that, if it was appropriate for the time and the, uh, and as opposed to a modern book, and we give the context, Mark Twain is safe.
Well, I mean, what I suggest does say that are not founded in cultural norms of the premise of the literature.
Okay.
So, to me, that would allow Mark Twain.
Yes.
Even to kill a mockingbird, I mean, that's been a target of a, a lot of people pulling it out, so. To me, I mean, I'm not a lawyer, so.
Well. I have a general comment that, um, I think last year, and Jessica Durant, we'd asked the question about giving the parents the opt-out policy. And while it may not have been a giant number of people that really opted it out, the people who did were pretty darn happy about it. I don't, I don't think there was, I think there was basically a minimal impact at the district. And if we're trying to convince people that we're actually listening to them and following their wishes, that's a pretty, you know, I think reasonable thing, that, that, you know, parents do have a say. Uh, but we're gonna, you know, within that, within that realm, so we give them the choice. I think that's a nice, strikes the balance between that and, um, well, just gives the parents the choice, it seems like a good idea.
Right, and I think that data is really telling that, um, that our parents, that students are engaged in our schools, are happy with those, those opt-out procedures and those kind of things, and they appreciate that. It is a small number, but they are happy with it. We haven't had any complaints regarding
And.
the, the restrictiveness, or the timeliness, or any of that, right?
Not only that, it represents a certain kind of, uh, a certain kind of freedom to say like, look, if you hold this, you hold this view strongly, you do have a say in the district for, for, you know, parents are the primary educator, that kind of, that kind of area. So I feel like, I feel like that was a win, and kind of in general.
It is.
Informing people in general of that is a win to keep students coming to our schools. And at various times, I've asked.
Right.
Uh, the, our PR director, Mr. Red Glasses.
Yep.
Jonathan.
Uh, to use that as a selling point, he doesn't have a real name.
It's Steven.
I, I refuse to acknowledge his real name, but. Mr. Red Glasses.
Hi, we love you.
Um.
Steven.
To use that as a selling point, no, I'm not, I'm not gonna change. I, I, I'm, I'm not gonna be around that with two more years, and there's no hope of changing me in those two years. I'm just gonna go with, uh, Mr. RG, how's that?
Yeah, he likes it.
It's, um.
But his name is Steven, not Jonathan, you're right, Nancy.
Pushing that policy is good for us.
Well, and, I mean, anything we can do to engage the public further. Because when it comes time to go pass a levy, if they think, well, it's an automated machine, we have nothing to say about it, that's not good.
I know.
And we actually do care what the public thinks.
And we, and if it's, uh, and we can put it into action if you're worried that your child was made unsafe by these teachings. So.
I guess another point too is, you had a lot of good thoughts, uh, and, uh, points, and we have some of that captured too, but if you think of anything, even for the remainder of the week, you know, and, and pass that too, we'll be drafting this, and so we could take those thoughts and suggestions, so just email Jessica and myself, and we'll make sure we try to synthesize as it makes sense into a draft. And, you know, if we get something working before, we could even send it out, and just so you can read it before a board meeting, you know, start to contemplate, come by and see me, I'll make some coffee.
I'm sorry.
And we could chat about it, it's okay. And we could chat about that too, so, you know, call, swing by, and we.
I wanna know what Nancy thinks.
Thank you for asking. Um, do we have any inspirational materials in our libraries? Do we have bibles, devotionals?
We do have, the Illinois Valley is probably gonna have a good season in football. Wait, that was off topic.
That was inspirational.
That's inspirational.
We do have bibles in our libraries.
Okay, that's good to know. Uh, Kirk Cameron has a series of children's books that I was thinking about, would be nice to have in our schools. So, um, I get, I order for my grandchildren, and they really love, uh, Clubhouse, and Clubhouse Junior, and Brio for girls.
Kirk Cameron, the childhood star?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Wow, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
We might have them.
Tuttle Twins, you could always, do you have the link to the, to the libraries? You can search them and see if they're in the libraries, the only bummer is you gotta do each school separately.
Can you send me the titles of the books?
Okay, I will.
Or, uh, I can look them up, just email me.
So do we yet know how new books are born into the library, like, what is, okay.
Yeah, and we're working on getting a report, I just actually met with Brenda Haberman, the library manager from Adrona this morning, uh, for about forty-five minutes, just talking about that, so, um, they have really specific avenues for purchasing through like Scholastic, uh, and a couple other, um, venue. Follet, which is our, kind of our computer system. And the, the benefit of us purchasing through those is that they give you intended audience, uh, for those books. And so she was talking about how some books have come to the library, uh, K-5, and then she's been able to look at those and, and determine that that was not age appropriate for K-5 environment, and sent them up to high school. But it's really, uh, we don't buy a lot of books, unfortunately, and, uh, it's dependent on a few different things. Budget, obviously, is the first thing. And elementaries have a mechanism for purchasing books, they have book fairs. Have you ever seen these book fairs? But Scholastic comes to the school, and they have all these books, and kids can buy books, and then they have other things that they can purchase. And then the sales of that gives the, the library kind of a credit, and then they can use that credit to buy books. So it's a lot of work to put on a book fair, and they used to do about three a year, and give them quite a bit of money to buy new books. They, it's, so it's, I think we've gone down to two a year because of the workload. Now, uh, high schools don't typically have book fairs, cause high school kids aren't as into book fairs as elementary kids, and so they have to find different avenues for funding those things, and I don't know. We used to have title support, we don't have that hardly anymore, and so there's, uh, the funding is actually an issue. So.
So, I, this is slightly off, but still connected. Do we have after-school clubs, and do some of them involve religious themes?
Uh, I'd have to look at our club list.
I don't know if they're, yeah, but that's not.
Yeah, good news, that's, that's not a school-based club, like, uh, drama, or FFA, or, you know, those kind of things that take place at the school.
There are outside, like, across the street, there is the Outback.
Yeah.
And they do amazing, um, work, I honestly, I would love to see it replicated for all the schools, so.
Because.
You need to replicate Gary.
I know, yes, and Adam, yes, both of them.
Yeah, they're amazing.
And find a place to have them, but.
Yeah, they're wonderful partners, for sure.
We cannot back a faith or even absence of faith. But if people have access through, put "club" in quotes, I can encourage people that want more to work on those clubs and provide that we're prohibited from making representations of the support for any particular, uh, uh, um, religious or non-religious position.
As long as you're on a side trip. Can students agree and organize a club in, in, in the school to talk about culinary, or religious, or how to play baseball, or something like that, what latitudes do students have to gather and organize?
Students actually do, a majority of our, you know, maybe non-traditional clubs or extracurricular activities, they form them. So there's some criteria, they have to find an advisor, uh, so they have to have someone on staff willing to support and sponsor that club. Uh, and then, uh, then they, there's an application, I think it's approved by the administration. I'm looking to my friends back here for nods, and they're nodding, so it's somewhere along those lines, but there, it's, it's kinda spelled out, we have that written out, um, yeah, and kids do.
In terms of freedom, I mean, like, hey, if students got together and say, we really wanna, you know, do a batting clinic, or do a bible study, or whatever, I don't know what latitude they may or may not have, but, you know, in the, in the, in the interest of freedom. And then if you, if the students are driving it, then the students are.
Yep, for sure.
Well, and then it, it doesn't always have to be a school-approved club either. Students can get together and form whatever club they want to, just outside of school.
Yeah.
So it doesn't have to be something that they do within the, the boundaries of the school too. So like the Outback, or there's a new Young Conservatives club that has recently started up that's, you know, for high school-aged kids.
And so what latitude, I mean, is basically, I mean, obviously, we don't wanna get in a situation, but, but don't, they, they seem to have the ability, it's, it sounds like, to go organize around one.
They certainly do, absolutely.
Well, it's, and it's another good selling point to say our children have freedom to form clubs based upon religion, or interests, or any, anything they might come up with that doesn't.
Well, it could be mounting, mountain biking, I mean, it could be whatever.
We have a mountain biking club.
Okay, can't be mountain biking.
At Illinois Valley High School, and, uh, I mean, they go, they go all over the place, it's unbelievable.
But if, again, if we're, if the idea is convincing the parents, look, you can have, like, hey, if your students get together and they wanna study young conservatives, or young liberals, or whatever, uh, that the school district is saying, okay, here's the guidelines, but go ahead, that's what I'm hearing.
Yeah, and then they get an advisor, and it's good to go.
But that type of freedom is a good selling point again.
We'll sell it, Pat.
Heck, my son used to bring his dirt bike to school, so.
My brother might have rode a dirt bike in the halls at Illinois High School, but that's another, so.
Is there mention of, um, like violent material? I remember one, I took my kids to the library years ago, and there was a, a book in the children's section that was just so violent, and just. So I thought that, and so I wrote, I wrote to the librarian, complained, and they took that book out along with another book. That's been quite a while, but they were very compliant about that.
So, we, we, if you could provide us a summary, so we can think about these changes, and anybody else who has additional changes that you wanna throw into that summary before our next meeting, get it to this gentleman, and she, he will identify the proposal and the proponent, and we'll take a look at it again.
Yep, we will do it. And ready to work, Pat.
So, I love giving you work. Now, I, I believe we are through with the meeting then, are we not? Okay, I am going to, okay, are you guys through talking to each other? Cause that would be an illegal meeting if I hit this gavel, cause that's what I learned. Okay.
Don't violently hit that gavel.
I, I'm gonna do this for the second time in my entire life. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.